Good evening, welcome to the March 19th regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education, Governance in the Time of COVID. Mr. Calavano, please call the roll.
Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Triggs Scales.
Here.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Here.
Notice the meeting. Please take notice that adequate notices meeting has been provided for in the following manner, that a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7, 2020. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, with all my devotion, honor, God, individual, and liberty, and justice.
All right. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of March 9th and 16th?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Triggs Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, Superintendent Report.
Yes, good evening, members of the Board and member of the community. I just want to start before I make a few remarks on the upcoming budget presentation which we're about to do. Obviously, the order and the topic of the day is, you know, the coronavirus, COVID-19, and the outbreak, and how we've been kind of managing that and dealing with that as a school district. First, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the precautions that we've taken for this meeting, as it is not altogether common for public meetings to still occur, and moving forward, we do foresee utilizing either a live streaming or virtual format. However, for this particular meeting, we did not have the adequate time to be able to prepare for that. But what we have done is, although we don't have really many members of the public here, we have, obviously, we're exercising social distancing between our Board members, our crew that's here to videotape it is a safe distance from us, and in the event that we had members of the public attend, we do have a security presence here and we would have utilized a spacing of no less than 10 seats and stayed within the directives for the maximum number of people to be in attendance or assembling in any one place at any one time. So, just as this is a public meeting and this is public record, I thought it were necessary to state those facts and precautions for the record. So, talking a little bit about what we've been doing and how we've been managing the situation, although we've been communicating out regularly to our community, I think it's, while some folks may not have heard those advisories, I think it's important to speak to them now. So, you know, last week, when it became aware, became apparent to us that school closures were imminent, that this was something that was going to happen, and though at that time the state county governments had not yet directed us to do so, it was clear that there was enough concern amongst our public that we were going to be closing schools effective this past Monday. Of course, the State Department of Education has authorized school districts to utilize a tele schooling or virtual schooling model to do that, but as we know and anyone within the profession recognizes, that raises many, many questions and challenges. I felt it incumbent upon me as the Superintendent of Schools, as Chief Academic Officer, that before we thrust our students and our staff and our community into that environment amidst many other uncertainties and anxieties, that we were as prepared as we possibly could be. And so, we switched our spring break to this week, and that relieved us from the responsibility of delivering instruction, but has given us much important time to plan for the many things that we're doing, from food services to technology, and most importantly, the instruction. And so, that is exactly what we've been doing. As we speak, a communication is going out to our parent community and student community with some quite outstanding and detailed guidelines and resources for them. I'd like to publicly commend, publicly commend our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Sevani de Mendez, and a large team of teachers and administrators who have literally been working around the clock this week to prepare our e-learning platform to open to our students and staff. From a food services standpoint, we've been working collaboratively with our food services provider, Masiós. I'd like to thank Mr. Joshua Kreutz, who is our Food Services Director here, and the work he's been doing, Mr. Calavano. We do have a plan next week. Now, I'd like to address some concerns because I know that it is a priority for our community, obviously both for those folks who are in need of those services, but also for other members of our community who are expressing care and concern for their fellow townspeople. We will have a drop off at each school, which will be from, each elementary school, which will be from 12 to 2. Recognizing that that may be difficult for some people to get to during that time, we will have additional parcels which will be left in those schools with a security guard. There will be a security guard staffing each one of those schools from 8:00 to 4:00 PM, and so any parents that aren't able to get there between the hours of 12 and 2:00 will have an opportunity to pick parcels up at other times of the day which are more convenient to them. We recognize that in some cases, there may be individuals who simply, it's impossible for them to get to the school in any way, shape, or form at any time of the day, and that could be because they're homebound, it could be because they've already been self-quarantined as a result of having come down with the virus. In those cases, we are setting up Effective Monday Food Services Hotlines whereby families will be able to call us. We have multiple languages for those hotlines, and we will be taking calls, and any families who have hardships, we will make sure that we have food personally delivered to their houses, we have the resource, the capacity to do that, and we've also talked to Nick Allegrino in the Office of Emergency Management, and he's prepared to assist with those deliveries as well. From a technology standpoint, obviously, one of the concerns relating to technology is that it only works if you have it, and it only works if you have Internet access so you can hook that computer up and have that computer on the Internet. Admittedly, when we embarked on this, we didn't really have a clear sense of how many households within our community, you know, didn't have a computer and/or access, and so last week we embarked on this endeavor to try and find that out. We sent out a technology access survey last week. We had many responses, but still left about 2,000 students unaccounted for. Now, those are not 2,000 households, but approximately 1,500 households. So this week, we've had seven or eight individuals calling around the clock, all the households that did not respond to the survey, and getting direct information from those households. By tomorrow, we should have a definitive idea down to the household, exactly which households do not have either a computer or access, and we will be providing direct guidance to them on how to acquire that. How will they acquire that? We will be providing pickup on Monday, all day, at a turnoff cafeteria. A word on the pickup. Again, we are going to be exercising the greatest due diligence in terms of maintaining the safety, not only the people who are coming to pick up technology, but also the staff members who are going to be working to distribute that technology. In the event that families are not able to come during the day, maybe they don't have transportation, once again, we'll be following the same protocol that we're doing with food services, which is we'll have hotlines set up, and we'll be ensuring that we're delivering those devices directly to the homes of the people that need them, whether through our own transportation resources, or again, through the resources of the Office of Emergency We will be commencing our e-learning in earnest on Tuesday. Monday is going to be kind of our second back to school, not night, but back to school day, and Monday will provide an opportunity for students and parents and our staff to kind of have a sandbox day, if you will, during which they'll be able to get acquainted with where their teacher's pages are, sort of the expectations, kind of wrap their head around it, and we will also be able to iron out all the wrinkles and details relative to our side of it, because as you may recall, we had to put this thing together pretty quickly in one professional development day, and then we went on vacation. So, we do have some teacher pages that we need to refine further, but our team of over 20 people have been working and combing through that site all week, checking links, checking pages, pushing resources into it, and so, we're well-prepared. So that kind of gives you an update on where we are. We will continue to operate a headquarters, if you will, out of the Board of Education office. That office is closed to the public, we have a small number of staff members present there, and we will continue to operate that facility until such time that we are directed by the state that we can no longer do so. And again, all employees that are working there are there voluntarily, they are being paid, they're voluntarily, and I'm meeting with that staff in that building on a daily basis, six feet apart in the room, and on a daily basis reinforcing the absolute critical nature of maintaining six feet from each other all the time, the entire time we're in the workplace, and also that we're nightly sanitizing that facility. So, in as much as we can feel positively or confidently at this time with everything going on, I would say that from the school district's perspective, Board of Education perspective, we're in a great place and we're as prepared as we possibly could be. Moving on to the budget presentation, just a few things to frame out this presentation. I'd like to just, you know, advise the public that we have been, not only us, no public school districts have been granted any relief from the state as it relates to the timeline for the submission of a preliminary budget to the state. And so clearly, with all that's been happening over the last couple of weeks, that certainly has not facilitated our ability to do this. Regardless, that is why we're here tonight, to propose a preliminary budget. Before I turn the microphone and we kind of switch our seats over, and I turn the microphone over to Mr. Calavano and Ms. Flores, our Business Administrator and Assistant Business Administrator, I'd just like to provide a little context for the public relative to our budgeting process. So, how we start our budget is by really calculating what are the increases in expenses in major categories that are essentially largely out of our control, and they are salaries, benefits, special education tuition, transportation, and required maintenance and utilities. And those five categories for the 2021 fiscal year total $7,924,918. That is the increase in expenses that is essentially out of our control. The revenue that we're able to generate from the 2% tax levy is $2,752,916, and the additional state aid, which has been much heralded as, you know, a salvation to the district's financial situation, which I would beg to differ, was, not that we're shaking a stick at it, we appreciate it, that was $2,276,176. That started us at the onset of the budgeting process with a deficit of almost $3 million, That's before we've talked about any additions to programs, it's before we've talked about any additions to staff. So that frame-out for you is really the budgeting and financial conundrum that we find ourselves, and which basically every school district in the state of New Jersey finds itself. I will tell you, before I turn it over, that the Board of Education, we've met on multiple occasions to go over the budget. I can tell you that the Board has had a critical eye on fiscal responsibility, and I believe in the budget that's being presented, has walked the most responsible and prudent line between fiscal responsibility and enabling the school district to maintain its programs and move forward and execute its mission. And with that, I will close my report.
Good evening. Before we get started, I just want to let everyone know that tonight is preliminary budget. That doesn't mean it's the final budget. We now have, after tonight's approval, documentation along with, much documentation goes to the county office, they review the entire budget. There'll be questions back and forth, and then we'll finally get our approval. And when we see that approval, then we advertise, we actually advertise, we put the budget in the newspaper, we advertise for our public hearing, public hearing is May 4th, that is the night, that's the final night for the budget. So we have an opportunity from tomorrow up until, including May 4th, to make adjustments to the budget. So here, you're going to see a lot of the same slides each year, because from my part of the budget, you know, it's still the same numbers, well, it's the same categories but different numbers. So here we have our budget goals. These budget goals were adopted on November 18th during that board meeting. I'm not going to read all the goals. Well, that looks a little bit better on paper than it does up there, but we have a glossary of budget terms. So when you look at the school district budget, there's really three pieces of the budget. One is a general fund, which is the operating budget, that's the day-to-day operations of the school district. Second one is special revenue, and that's for grants that we receive that are restricted for certain purposes. And then debt services, like your monthly mortgage, we're paying our principal interest back on construction bonds or lease purchase agreements that we had in the past. There's another account called capital reserve. There's two ways to fund this account. One is we can make a deposit during, now, during budget time, but remember, if we make a deposit, it's eating away our 2% tax levy, so it's part of the entire budget, it's not excluded from our, you know, how much we can raise the budget. So most districts can't afford to do that at this time, but there is another opportunity at year-end on June 30th, that we actually pass a resolution each year, and we don't have sufficient funds, but if you have excess surplus, and we're allowed to keep 2% of the current budget, anything over 2%, that will go into capital reserve if a Board of Education approves a resolution to do so, and we do that each June, but unfortunately, we don't even reach the 2%, so nothing really goes to capital reserve. And capital reserve is very important because these are funds that are put aside for capital projects throughout the year. So if we have a major issue at one of the schools, by Board resolution, we could transfer money out of this capital reserve fund and actually move ahead with the project. Bank cap, so talking about the 2% tax levy, if you don't go up to the 2% tax levy, you go below the 2%, then whatever the difference is, that gets put aside into like a bank. And all that means is that, that gives you the ability, you have three years to use it. So, three years ago, if we didn't go to the 2%, or when we gave back the $3 million when we received that additional aid, so we were below the tax levy by $3 million, that gets put into a bank. At any time during budget time, and it'll be included in tonight's resolution, you can move the money from the bank and increase your tax levy. So, it's not additional funding, all it is, is the ability for you to increase your 2% tax levy. Fund balance, it's the, it's like a savings fund, in case, one, we want to have cash on hand, so we have sufficient, so we can meet our payrolls and our bills list that we have every month, and then we also want to keep the 2% because there are times of the year that if you needed to make a transfer out of fund balance because you have like an emergency, and we don't have capital reserve funds, then by Board resolution at certain times of the year, you can actually move money from fund balance to the operating budget. School levy is a tax bill that's collected by the municipality, and the tax rate is the amount of dollars per 100 of assessed, of what your home's assessed for. Here's our timeline, goes to the county tomorrow. Prior to April 20th, the county has to approve our budget, and then May 4th will be our Our cost saving, our shared services that produce cost savings, our biggest is our ed data services, it's a purchasing group, over 450 school districts come together and they go out for purchasing. For the current year that we're in now, and most of ed data purchase orders are processed for the beginning of the school year, so we will start probably sometime in May, start producing these purchase orders for July, August delivery, and by joining this consortium, we actually saved $334,000 by joining the group. The next largest one is the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. It used to call, each county has an Educational Services Commission. This one used to be called Middlesex, but Middlesex drew, where they just not, they invited school districts, colleges, municipalities, and now they're up to like 1,300 members. So that's why they removed their Middlesex Ed Educational Services, the Educational Services of New Jersey. So that's another consortium that we use a lot. They do the bidding for the school districts, and then we get to utilize the low pricing and the services that's provided. And then here's some of the other ones that we use. And then we have the revenues. So again, remember, three parts of the budget, one is the operating budget, and this is not unique to West Orange, it's all school districts, your largest chunk is coming from the local tax levy. State aid, now this state aid is $17.8 million. It's a lot higher than when we received our state aid notices, because it includes two additional aids that we actually have to apply for. One is aid in lieu of, so children that attend non-public schools, our first responsibility is to provide transportation for those students, and within the $1,000 per student. So if we can't find a contractor that will provide the transportation within the $1,000, then we actually have to pay the parent or the family $1,000 per student. Currently, we have about 575 students that's in this budget to be paid aid in lieu of, so that's $575,000. So at one time, the aid in lieu of was $710, and it was frozen at 710, and then all of a sudden, the state decided to keep creeping it up. They went up a little bit, they went up, now we're at $1,000, but the aid is only based on 710 that we receive. So now, once the Department of Ed raised the rate, they now, we have to apply for it at year-end, but they will now give us the difference between the $710 that we receive in aid and $1,000 that we actually pay out for the parent. So that's about $100,000 that we receive. And then there's another aid that we actually have to apply for in May, it's extraordinary aid. This provides additional aid to the school districts with classified students who have certain expenses over a set threshold. Currently, in this budget, we budget $1.5 million. And again, that's, we're hoping to receive that, we don't know what the pot is, because they have a pot of money, and it depends on how many school districts apply, what the expenses are, and then they prorate it throughout the school district. So, right now, we're anticipating $1.5 million. So if you take the original state aid notice that was released, and you add these two categories, you'll get to the 17.8. Budgeted fund balance, again, that's that savings account that each year we keep taking from, and we offset the budget cuts in our local budget. We were at one time at $2.5 million, we were relying on fund balance each year to balance the budget, and that's not a good way of working with the budget each year. So we decided that we're going to try to wean ourselves off each year by $250,000. So, this is, last year, we went down to $2,250,000, and now this year's budget will include $2 million from fund balance. And then we have tuition and miscellaneous, which is about $771,000. So our total operating budget is $161,688,766. Fund 20, special revenue, again, that's restricted for grants, federal and state, and this also includes, if you recall, during a regular board meeting, we'll approve expenses for non-public schools for security or technology. So that money that's given to the non-public runs through our budget, through our purchasing laws, and it's also included in this fund 20. So it's not ours to keep, and what we don't use, or what the school doesn't use, we actually have to return it to the state. And then debt services, our debt service I spoke about earlier, local tax levy, basically, and some state aid that we do receive. You'll see a budgeted fund balance, $2, that's because when we estimate the payments, we have to round up, so when we round up, we end up with $2 at the end of the year, and we're required to put it back into the budget for the following year. So our total grand budget at this point is $170,999,914. So the expense side, it matches the revenues, $170,999,914. So here are the major categories, salaries. Now, these salaries include projected increases, guide movements, meaning that depending on the courses that you take, college courses, you can, and the credits that you receive, you can actually move from BA to a BA 20, or a master's degree, or a doctorate degree, and that's movement on a guide, and that comes with an increase in your salary. So we have to anticipate those movements and longevity. Benefits, this line of $26 million includes not only health, but also workers' compensation, social security, our pension payment that we have to make, actually, I just made a pension payment today. We actually, the school districts have to pay for the individuals that are in the public employee's retirement system, and these are non-certificated individuals. So our pension payment today was $2.2 million. Now, on the other side, the certificated staff members, teachers, administrators, the state pays on behalf of the school district, so that's, you know, we don't have to pay for that bill. And I can only imagine what that would be, if we're paying only 2.2 for a small group, it's a big number. And then we have special services, here, this includes everything, we tried to capture all special services, even in transportation, that's $15 million. And then looking down at the other categories, you come to the transportation, it's general education, again, this is where the $575,000 is budgeted for the non-public school for aid in lieu of. Charter school, we have seven students, seven West Orange students attending six schools, so we have to pay a tuition to the charter schools. And then capital outlay, this involves equipment that's valued over $2,000, construction projects, and we have a, an assessment that the state passed along to us years ago of $115,000, and these are projects where we received grant funding from the state years ago, Schools Development Authority, and now they decided that they need help paying back the loans that they received, and they assessed all the school districts, so each year we're hit with $115,000.
Mr. Calavano.
Yes.
For instruction and support, can you just clarify what goes into that, generally speaking?
That would be textbooks and materials and supplies.
Thank you.
And again, no salaries, we tried to capture all salaries on a salary line. Here we'll talk about tax levy cap for the operating budget. So you'll see the first line, local tax levy, that's our 2% that we can go up to, but this year to balance the budget, we had to use $692,440 of bank cap, so when you add that to the 2%, now you're at 2.5% for your increase in your local tax levy, and that's just for the operating budget. And there's two tax levies, one for the operating budget and one for debt service. Here is a chart about where we are in terms of using, utilizing bank cap. So the blue represents where we are today with our operating budget and with the small amount of bank cap that we use, we still have $5 million, a little over $5 million of bank cap that we can utilize, and I believe we still have another year before some of it starts, we start losing some of it, so we can actually go up to 146, 150, 267 in the operating budget.
Mr. Calavano. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
But when you do that, what you're doing is you're increasing your taxes.
Thank you, Jen, and I think this is, this is a good slide to look at and for the community to see, because the Board would be completely within its right to utilize every cent of this bank cap, all five and a half million of it, and could vote on that and could be used. And of course, it would have a tremendous, you know, negative impact, if you will, on the burden to the local taxpayer. And so I think it's important to keep this slide in mind, and again, kind of coming back to that idea of the fiscal responsibility of the Board, that it would have been at least far easier from a budgetary standpoint to simply use more bank cap, but I can tell you, sitting in those budget sessions, the Board was very clear on their desire to really minimize the impact on the local tax. desire to really minimize the impact on the local taxpayer. And I think this is, this slide is a good, is a good visual representative of that fiscal responsibility.
So I guess when, when school districts were capped at the 2%, the state realized that, A, if you don't use all the 2%, you can actually bank it and use it, you know, in another year if you needed to. But there's also some other adjustments that they provided school districts, like an increase in healthcare costs. They realized with a 2% cap, if the increases are 16, 17%, just so there's a formula where there's the difference between whatever the state health benefit program increases to where other school districts, and you can take the difference. But this year, there's no healthcare costs eligible for any school district. So the state did realize at that point, if you're going to be capped, all the certain things that were going to allow you to go and take an adjustment to. Here's the total tax levy. So you're looking at the general fund, which is the operating budget again, and debt service. So the total is 146,440, 146. So then we look at the comparison from the current year to the proposed year. There's that 2.50 that we, we did see that earlier for the operating budget. Debt service fund was, it's actually a negative. We, we were able to reduce our tax levy this year because years ago, and I'm thinking probably seven, eight, maybe even 10 years, there was an error made. What occurred is, we were receiving funding through a grant. We received like a 40% funding through a grant, but we also were receiving debt service aid. So you can't, you can't receive both, it's one or the other. So the state, I think it was three years ago, found this mistake, and they were going to take it, they wanted it all back in one year. So I pleaded with them, can you do it over three years? They did it over three years, now we're caught up. So now, that's why we see an actual decrease from 1920. So if you're looking at total tax levy, which is the two, the debt service and general fund, it's only a 2.11% increase. Taxes, how would a tax be struck on a calendar year basis? So if you're looking at calendar year 2020, you're looking at half from the old school year and half from the new school year. So when you look at this, you're looking at half of the tax levy from the 1920 budget and half in the 2020 budget. So when we raise taxes for calendar year 2020, you're looking at 144,929,113. Here are some items that are included in the budget. To continue supporting technology initiatives, we have 2,800 Chromebooks for students, 125 laptops for teachers, and 60 desktops for staff. And we're looking at doing a three-year lease to purchase these items. Then we have some capital projects. Looking at the lighting system at Liberty, I don't know if you've been at Liberty lately, but in the evening, the lights are blinking on and off. We need to fix that. So that's going to be a part of the upgrade in the budget. We have a main water line that needs to be replaced at St. Cloud, and some roof replacements, retaining wall, as a structural replacement over at the bus garage. This may change. We actually had some other issues that we noticed the last couple of days. So I think when we get to the final, you'll probably see one or two new items and we'll have to remove some of these items. Increase in your taxes for the average homeowner. Average homeowner based on the 338,121 of assessed value, not the market value, which you're assessed on your tax bill, you're looking at an increase per month, $22.18. And tomorrow, I will have the, this presentation posted on our website. I'll also have my tax calculator posted, so you can go in, put your own assessment, and then you'll see what the proposed increase will be.
Mr. Calavano, can you go back to that slide where you had the percentages relative to the expenses? I just want to call attention to something there for the, the edification of the public perspective. So I think, I think this, this tell, this slide tells a lot. This slide tells a lot of stories, doesn't it? You know, when we look at, you know, our, our budget of 170 million dollars, and then you look at the percentage of that budget that is dedicated specifically to instruction and support, and that's why I asked that question, Mr. Calavano. I sort of knew the answer, but I wanted to make sure that I was accurate on it, that that's, that's, those are the things that go into the classrooms and the supplies, the things that, and look at, and look at the percentages, 3.93% of our budget. When you look at really the lion's share, the vast majority of the expenditures, and yes, obviously salaries and benefits represents, you know, what, 100 and, almost 120 million in salaries and benefits? And, you know, you have things, you know, transportation, I mean, just, just, just costs that are necessary for us just simply to operate this school district on, on a daily basis. And so, when we think about this idea of fiscal responsibility, and I, and I understand it, and I understand it, you know, and in some ways, I actually appreciate the 2% cap because we can't just continue to raise taxes. And it's required us to really kind of be more thoughtful and critical about the way we develop budgets. And we have been. I can tell you, in sitting through our budget sessions, we really have become creative in some of the ways that we're trying to reduce costs. For example, flexing our security schedules and flexing our custodial schedules to cut down on our overtime, to look at how we're, we're doing chaperoning for events. That's just two of many things that we've looked at to bring about reductions. But when the rubber meets the road, folks, these are relatively small. The only way you're going to get a school district operating at, you know, at a point where it's going to satisfy the most conservative of the fiscal prudence out there, is if you take that salary line and you decrease that drastically, drastically. And if you decrease that salary line drastically, then you're going to change the landscape of this school district and any school district. You're going to be talking about increased class size. You're going to be talking about losing programs, the richness and the variety and the robustness of our programs, our extracurricular programs, our sports, the many, many offerings we offer in this high school, and other schools as well. That's what we're talking about. And so moving forward, I mean, I think this is, from my perspective, is a fair and responsible budget, but this is an annual challenge we're going to face. And so moving forward, you know, it's, it's going to be incumbent upon our school district to define what is our identity and what is our crucial mission, what's central to our mission, and what programs are absolutely necessary for that. And we will, unless things change economically, have to start prioritizing. Because that top number, I'm sorry to say it, that's where the money's going to be saved. We can scrimp and think critically about these other things, but you see it, you know, instruction and support, and I got to tell you, bringing instruction and support down to 6 million and the percentage, if we brought it down 700,000, the percentage that that would represent in our budget would be minuscule. And its impact on what we can do here on a day-to-day basis would be massive. And so, I just think it's important to put that in perspective for the public. Just to piggyback on something that Mr. Calavano said, we do also plan, in addition to putting this, this budget up on the website, we are planning to schedule another meeting in April. We only had one at the moment, which was on April 20th. We are planning, I believe right now, we're scheduling it for April 6th, although it hasn't been advertised. And we will plan to do this presentation again on April 6th. If we're not able to convene in a public space at that point in time, we will have the capacity to livestream it at that time. And so this way, the public, if they weren't able to hear it live, we also will have a mechanism for questions, so that if members from the public are watching and wanted to call in with questions, they could do that. So there will be another bite at the apple, if you will, for our public at this. But again, no relief from the state. We are required to submit it tomorrow.
Thank you.
We'll take questions starting from the far end with Ms. Tuncliff.
I don't have any questions right at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Rothstein?
Only question is if we're turning heat on? No, no questions at this time. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Calavano.
Ms. Marklenger?
No questions, but I know this does come up every year with the public in regards to benefits. So if, Mr. Calavano, if you could speak to why we don't move to the state plan or why that is not being considered at this time, or Dr. C.
I think, I think Mr. Alper wanted to speak to that this evening, correct?
I, I was actually prepared to talk about the state, the state health benefits plan a little bit. So every year, we actually do look at the state health plan numbers and, you know, some years, it's actually more expensive than what we have, other years, it's less expensive. But all of our contracts have a equal or better provision, saying that the board has the right to change health plans as long as it's to something that's as good or better than what we're switching, than what we have now. So the state health plan, and while it's probably a perfectly cromulent plan, and I'm sure it's probably better than what I have personally and better than, it's not as good. So if we ever were to switch, you know, let's say that your co-pay is currently, and I'm making these numbers up, but if your co-pay is currently $10 and you switch, you get switched to a plan that's otherwise just as good, but your co-pay is now $25, every time an employee goes to the doctor, the board has to, from somewhere, through some mechanism, give them a check for $15. So it ends up being the case that because of the, it's a make-good, so because of the make-goods over time, it ends up being actually more expensive or the same.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, that was it.
All right. Ms. Trigscals?
I really don't have any specific questions. I'd just like to thank our business administrator and our assistant business administrator and our superintendent and assistant superintendent for delivering a budget that the board can live with. We've tweaked it, and I would say not a lot, but it came to us in, in very good shape. And so, again, I'd just like to commend you. And we know it's not, it's not final, but where we are right now is fine.
All right. And I would agree with thanking everyone for their hard work on this. My one question, actually, for Dr. Cascone. At the beginning, you said there was $7.9 million in increases just from salaries, benefits, special ed tuition, transportation, and one thing that I missed.
Required maintenance.
Maintenance, that was it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Alper, I'm sorry. May I ask just one question? Just with regards to, this is going to the state tomorrow, and Mr. Calavano, you mentioned that it's not the final version because we'll have an opportunity to look at this again. What is the process of reconciling the difference between what goes to the state tomorrow and any changes that are made subsequent?
We will actually prepare a list for you of any changes that we make from the submission tomorrow to the final, and we're also required to provide that to the state too, because when we send the final budget in, they don't want to look at the whole thing, they already looked at it, so they just want to see what changes occurred.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Questions from the public on agenda items only. Come on down. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Signature Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all your hard work and the great communication during COVID-19. And thank you for making sure that our students are on free reduced lunch and all of our students are provided with the resources that they need, and for e-learning. It's awesome. I have a couple of questions on the budget and some of the attachments on the agenda. So, Mr. Alper mentioned the state health, health benefits plan, and that is true. But this year, Senator Sweeney's supposed to be talking with the NJEA, and that might actually look a little bit better for the district this year, so I'm not sure if you guys are looking at that. And if other districts go into it, then it might behoove you to take a look. I know there were maybe less than 20 districts that were in it just before I got off the board. I don't know how many districts are in it now, but they may be going back in it, given our current economic climate and, should I say, freefall of everybody's 401K and pensions. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I know every year, we always try to shop around for a better health benefit plan. I'm, I'm hoping that you've done that this year. Couple of things I didn't see on the budget presentation. We had issues last year with air quality, CO2, HVAC, and that's not broken out here. We had a security audit, a cybersecurity audit, that's not reflected in the budget as to how much is being set aside for security. There was also a grant of some sort that was being looked at then, I don't see that here either. And as one of your board budget goals is safe environment, I, I think that should be, that should be here too. A few years ago, there was an, an error by the former BA, 1.2 million dollar error, and so every year, we had to repay 400,000. Just want to know if that has been fully paid now, or if that's still reflected in this budget? Let's see. I'm, I'm not sure why you broke out transportation this way, transportation, general education, 6, 6,452,355, and then special services included in transportation, as opposed to transportation and then broken down by general and, general and special services. Just wondering. The bank cap, a few years ago, we ended up leaving bank cap on the table. So I'm surprised to see that there's $5 million in bank cap and you're not using any of it. And that reminds me that last year, you had looked at going to a referendum for a bond to, to improvements in the district, and there's no mention of that tonight. On page 14, purchasing the Chromebooks, I just want to know, is that a purchase or lease? And if it's a lease, is that going to be spread or purchased? Is that going to be spread over three to five years, or is that a purchase for this year? And how much are the Chromebooks? The 2,800 Chromebooks, 125 laptops for teachers, and 60 desktops for staff? Capital projects, I don't know which time, oh, I'm out of time. Capital projects, the lighting system for Liberty Middle School. This school is the newest school in the district, and at 12 years old, I can't imagine that Liberty needs anything, and especially a lighting system. So I'm curious as to why that's here. And the retaining wall at Washington was 750,000. I just wanted to know if that ticket has gone up, and how much is the retaining wall at Hazel?
Thank you.
There's no numbers here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mordecai. Great questions, and I think they will enrich this presentation and enable us to kind of respond to some, if not all, of those at these time, at this time. And then we can also kind of look at those questions and include them, you know, in an enhanced presentation that we do the next go-around. So thank you so much. I don't know where you got all that kind of insight. Yeah, you're so informed as just a regular member of the public, Mrs. Mordecai. So let's talk about the referendum for starters. That's one I can speak to. So, you know, we, as you know, we, we sent preliminary plans down to the state. And at that time, the planned referendum was substantial. I mean, it was, it was north of $50 million. And I think, you know, we kind of looked at that and said, how feasible, practical would it be to, responsible would it be to move forward a referendum at that size? And what would the public's, how palatable would that be to the public? And I think we agreed that, that it probably would not be. I think when you look at this budget, and certainly, the board had a critical eye on the referendum, and I'll talk a little bit about our timeline with that in a moment, had a critical eye on that referendum, knowing that this board will be moving a referendum vote forward within the next year or so, and that that will also contribute to increased taxes. I think that, that is why I think we were perhaps maybe a little bit more frugal than we would have liked to have been with the bank cap, because we didn't want to compound that between this budget and a referendum that's forthcoming. So, starting, our plan originally was that in early April, we were going to bring together a public work session on the referendum, a public board work session on the referendum to kind of dust that, that process off a little bit. What we've What we've done since then, as you may recall from your time in the board, Mrs. Mordecai, is our architect of record has recently completed a comprehensive facilities evaluation with every nook and cranny, and so when we go back to work on this referendum, we're going to kind of be reprioritizing. That being said, HVAC continues to be a number one priority, specifically as it relates to the most critical HVAC needs, those that are code-based, those that will address landlocked classrooms and things of that nature, and the most significant of the air quality issues. Obviously, the complete refabrication, renovation and refabrication of our HVAC system is going to be an ongoing process, but the referendum, a piece of the referendum, will be dedicated to the most critical HVAC needs, and then there will be other projects which will be determined moving forward to fill the rest of that referendum out, which will, again, will be significantly less than what was originally proposed.
And regarding your other questions, the health benefit plans, they're shopped every year. And not only are the health benefit plans shopped every year, the property and liability policies also shopped every year. Security audit, we did have some items that we originally anticipated to put in this budget, but there is a grant that will be available, I believe, April, May, so we pulled them out of budget because they'll be qualified under the grant that will be out there for the school districts. And we already received an allocation, so we would have to apply for it, and I believe we'll be successful in obtaining that and completing what we wanted to complete in this year's budget. But it's going to be taken out and put through the grant. The debt service error, yes, last year was the final payment, so this year, we, you know, the other $400,000, we received in state aid. Transportation, we always separated out the transportation from regular ed and special ed because we were always asked in the past, you know, what does the whole special ed cost include, you know, include everything in special services? What is that total? So that's why the transportation was taken out of the transportation line. The bank cap, we are using bank cap, we're using $692,440 this year for bank cap. Technology lease, it's a three-year lease, and right now, we're looking at a lease of Regarding the retaining wall, you wanted to know Hazel? $55,000 is budgeted for the Hazel retaining wall along the playground.
Ms. Calavano, a quick question. The COPS grant itself, and then the pre-apprenticeship CTE grant we got from the state, would or should those be reflected as revenue? Or because we received them this year, they would be considered revenue?
We received them this year, right.
Gotcha.
Right. So we're not anticipating receiving that again for next year.
Gotcha. So we've received two large grants this year. One, of course, was the Department of Justice COPS grant, another one was a $100,000 grant from the Department of Education for career and technical education pre-apprenticeships. We've received some smaller grants, we received a $6,000 vaping grant, we received a $2,500 Sustainable New Jersey grant, maybe a couple other small ones, and we have a couple other applications for grants out, but they're smaller grants, $10,000, $15,000. The two big ones were Department of Justice and NJDOE.
Yep. Yeah, I think I would just add, as far as the Sweeney legislation, you know, we're keeping an eye on it. Last we heard, it was they were going to try to get it done before June, and then, of course, you know, the virus struck. So, you know, if it ends up happening in time for final budgets, you know, it's possible, but you know, at this point, it's just an idea, so there's no way to account for that mathematically in a budget yet. It's just, you know, something that we're aware of and hoping for. You know, and I think as Dr. Cascone highlighted in the presentation, you know, obviously, there is the 692,000 in bank cap, you know, of the potential 5 million, you know, the rough back of the envelope math is that every million dollars of bank cap is about another percentage of a tax increase. So, you know, in theory, if you were to use $5 million in banked cap, you'd be increasing taxes 7%, which would be horrible and, you know, unconscionable, you know, not something that would ever be on the table. So, you know, as far as why we wouldn't use $5 million in banked cap, I think that's pretty much it. Seeing no further. Yeah, there'll be, seeing nothing further on agenda questions, though, we'll close this portion and move on. May I have a motion for personnel items one through three?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Like to highlight, we've got three retirements tonight, Susan Cooper at Washington, Elizabeth Manning here at the high school, and Gerald Powers at Redwood, 22 and 25 in 25 years. So congratulations to them and best wishes in retirement. Any other discussion? All right.
I missed who moved it.
I'm sorry. Who was the motion?
Karen.
Ms. Roth.
No.
No? Oh, Ms. Tonny Cliff, down the end.
And I seconded.
Okay.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggscales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, curriculum and instruction, items one through three. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have one, it's not really a question, but just something to think about as we move forward with the school year and just thinking about some of the business requests. I was wondering if you ever get feedback about some of the conferences that our staff attends and what have, what have they seen as being impactful to their classroom or in their day-to-day work? Have they seen that those conferences or what they've learned in those sessions have, they've implemented in their classrooms and what the results have been? Just so, just something to think about, not necessarily a question.
It's a good question.
Gotcha.
Good question. Being completely transparent, we do have some mechanisms for staff members to report out on, you know, the benefit of the workshop they attended and, you know, what they foresee as the future value to their classroom and to the district. But kind of as a tangent to that, Mrs. Merklinger, in this budget, we've really, the 2021 budget, we've really put a more critical eye on the amount of money that we're spending on out-of-district PD, and really are going to place a greater emphasis next year on internal PD, in particular that delivered by our own staff members. And when we do send people to out-of-district PD, ensuring that we're really drawing clear strategic connections back to our own operations. Because I will tell you, I do think, and this is not just in West Orange, I think it's globally in the profession, we haven't, as a profession, done a particularly good job of measuring the impact of the professional development in which staff engage, so it's an astute question. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggscales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Up next, finance, special services items one through three and business office one through 10. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggscales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Reports, item one, may I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And seconded.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggscales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. And finally, miscellaneous, item one, may I have a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tonny Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggscales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, petitions and hearings of citizens, public comment. Come on back down.
Hello again. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. I ran out, ran out of time earlier, but the $5 million in bank cap, you mentioned you have to use it within one year. It's going to be very difficult to do that within the next year, and that's why I brought that up. On the agenda, even though you already voted on it, and I'm doing this from memory, but I saw the attachment online, the Sussex County Regional Transportation Agreement, they transport 5,000 students. Now, they have three agreements, you have three agreements online. One's 2%, the other's 2%, and the special ed transportation is 3%. Why are they charging you a 3% fee for the special ed transportation instead of 2% for each group, for public, private, and special ed? That's one thing to, I wanted to know. And I see that your attachment, you have a calendar here, just wanted to know how many snow days you've already used for the school year, and wondering why that wasn't used for next week or this week or how that figured in? Because I don't think we really had a lot of snow this year, so maybe you used one or maybe you had a delayed opening, so just.
Sure, I can, I can.
Wondering about that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can speak to that. So, right, so you're right, we, we had a little bit of a, you know, kind of a busy, busy time early on in the season where we had some delays and early dismissal, and we did have the one snow day. We used our, our first snow day for last Friday, which was, you know, which was a PD day, but technically, it was a snow day because we had no students in. And we used the third snow day for this past Monday, March 16th. The fourth snow day is actually going to be used in able to, in order for us to enable to have the Thursday off on the new calendar, and so that's where that fourth snow day is going to be utilized. It does enable us to offer some consolation in the spring break with, that is, if in fact, we are in the schools, which I'm the eternal optimist, I'm going to say, yes, we're going to be back for spring break. And which means that we'll at least be able to do an early dismissal on Wednesday, we'll have Thursday off, which for our friends who celebrate Passover, they'll be home long before sundown on Wednesday night, they'll be off on Passover for, you know, for that Thursday, and then, of course, we'll have the Good Friday. So it'll end up being about a four and a half day spring break, which is, I think, some measure of consolation if in fact, we're here. And if we aren't here, it'll, it'll still be spring break whereby the teachers will not be teaching online and the students can sleep in and, you know, do whatever they feel on those days. So that's the explanation there, Mrs. Mordecai.
So regarding the other questions, bank cap, we have, we generated three, well, what's left of it, because now we're using 692,000 this year, but we have $3.8 million that were generated in 1819. You have three years before you lose that. And then we had a $1.2 million generated in 1920, and you have three years to use that. So we do have a couple of years to use both pots of bank cap. Sussex, we have all three on the agenda for approval. We basically use them for our special ed routes because they combine, you know, our children with other children if they're going to the same school and if they're heading through a community. So their prices are their prices. I think they increase this year or for next year in order for them to hire additional staff because they're, I mean, think about the number of routes that they handle for the state of New Jersey and for all the school districts. So I think they're understaffed, and I think by them increasing their administrative fee to the school districts in order to provide them, hopefully, they'll be able to provide better service.
All right. Moving on, board member comments. Ms. Tonny Cliff?
I would like to just take a moment to thank all of our administration, our staff, our teachers. I know this was not the popular choice to move ahead with an e-learning, but I am, all the reports I'm getting, I'm super excited about the work that's been done by everybody in our central office and all those staff in surrounding buildings that have helped to make this possible. I know it's been a huge challenge for everyone, but I'm really interested to see how this turns out because I think by all accounts, we've covered all the bases, and I think it's going to be an interesting foray into our online learning. So I just wanted to thank everybody for going ahead with that. And then I have a few things on the legislative, if I can find my paper, hang on. Obviously, there was a hundred, a couple of things that passed that are related to us. There was a passage of A 3813, which permits use of virtual or remote instruction to meet the 180-day school year requirement, which we're taking advantage of here. There was also a unanimous vote to pass A 3839, which makes supplemental appropriation of 20 million from general fund to New Jersey DOE to support school facility cleaning and sanitation. So I look forward to hearing, hopefully, about that. Those are the two things that I just wanted to highlight on, in terms of legislation for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rothstein?
I'm really very limited in my comments, I wanted to just follow what Ms. Tonny Cliff said. As a member of the board, but also as the parent of a student in West Orange schools, I'm very grateful to what I'm seeing, for what I'm seeing out of the school district, looking out for our students and making sure that basic primary needs are taken care of and educational and academic needs as well. The strong leadership and communication is very much appreciated. I know everybody's been working very late hours, under a good deal of stress with your own families as well, and so just wanted to express my gratitude.
Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
So I echo my peers in just thanking all the staff, the administration, just what I've seen from other districts that rolled out their online learning already this week. Not to say that they haven't done their necessary steps, but it just seems that our district, we put in a lot more thought into just covering all of our bases and making sure, while we probably won't get it 100% correct, that we're like 99.9% there, and I think that's great. So I just want to thank Dr. C. and everyone in the central office and those who are volunteering their time and those that are helping out and assisting in the community, whether it's donating food or helping to distribute it. I know a lot of the restaurants in town have been helping out our students, so I just want to recognize and thank those restaurants. I know it's Fratissimos, Pepe's, I just, there were so many that were, I think the list is growing day by day. So I just want to thank all those folks that were willing to, in light of everything that's going on, put aside the fact that they're their own small businesses and help out our students, and I think that's really great and speaks a lot to what the West Orange community is all about. But just with that, you know, with the hashtag flatten the curve, encouraging everyone to stay home, but on top of that, you know, be sure you check in on your friends because this is a tough time, and folks being forced to stay at home, kind of, just check in on your friends. There's actually more suicides that take place now in the spring than there are from folks that are passing away from coronavirus, so just make sure you check in on those friends. And if you haven't heard, the CDC has actually released some more information about vaping and the dangers of it, so while folks are sitting at home, try and educate your children on vaping. And I just want to, you know, just say that with everything that's going on, for folks that are in need in town, just talk about or reach out to your employers. The president did approve the Families First Act, which helps folks who are at home, caring for children that are home from school, so just reach out to your employers and find out about that. I thought that was a great thing, it goes into effect on April 2nd, and I know some folks, just through social media, were commenting about their concerns for that, so it's definitely something to look into, but that was it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Triggscales?
My fellow board members have said it all. I just want to, again, commend our leadership. Moving spring break to this past week, I think, was absolutely brilliant. I've been in touch with other members of other school districts, and as Ms. Merklinger said, they're doing fine. But this is, I've coined this term for myself, footprints in virgin sand. We're stepping out in a place we have never been before, and so they're feeling their way. way, and I think having this extra week for us has been incredible. It's given everybody a chance to exhale. And to the team that has been working right on through, thank you to them. And I know that on Tuesday, West Orange will be in its glory as we step out and make this happen. And again, thank you to the community.
Yeah, what everybody else said, and, you know, it's been amazing to see this take shape and the amount of work that's been done by the whole administrative team and Dr. Cascone and Ms. DeBendis and the techs and the clerical aides work on the phones and, you know, everyone has come together to make this possible, and I think we're going to be really proud of what we end up putting together for as long as it's necessary. And I would agree with what Cheryl was saying about, you know, checking in on your friends and, you know, the isolation, you know, of being trapped in your home and, you know, texting Facebook message and, you know, bring each other things and leave them outside their doors and, you know. It's hard to be friends with six feet distance, but, you know, try, do what you can. That'll wrap this up. Our next board meeting.
Mr. Alper?
Yes, sir.
I have to make one more recognition, and Mrs. Merklinger's comments just kind of, just kind of triggered it in my head as she was mentioning the businesses who've helped out. I would be absolutely remiss if I did not give a public shout-out to Cynthia Cummings and the Trinity Church Food Pantry. I mean, Cynthia was a whirling dervish this week. You know, she and, you know, members of the West Orange Police Department, you know, brought 70 bags, weekly bags of food, and I can tell you that we deliver them to schools. We still have some in the central office, and people have been really taking advantage of those things. And so, she's been just an absolute, you know, just a guardian angel for this community as she's done that work, so I wanted to publicly thank her for that.
All right. Thank you. Our next meeting is at 7:30 PM on April 6th, most likely, possibly here, possibly on the internet, and hopefully we'll see you there one way or the other. And we're adjourned.